Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is additions and/or deletions to the agenda. Is everybody comfortable with the agenda as is? Okay, then we will approve it by consensus. Moving to the approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting, which was quite a while ago, December 4th of 2017. Did anybody have any comments regarding these minutes? Dan? Jay?
None.
Jim?
None.
Entertainer motion to approve as presented. Motion from Eric, support. Jim, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Laurie, as usual, great job. We can always count on you. First item of, next item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody wishing to address the commission about any item not on the agenda? Seeing no hands, we'll move on. To the first item of business, which is a sketch plan review for an ice cream shop. The applicant is Jeff Zubkey, 20570 HCO Jackson Drive, Groseal. The owner of the property is corporate, Salatz Enterprises 2 Incorporated. They have a P.O. Box 37, again on Groseal. The location of the property legally is Lot 25 of Gray Woods subdivision. The common description is this is part of Victoria Commons, 8756 Macomb. And Victoria Commons is on the north side of Macomb. It's directly to the east of the driveway where you go back into senior housing coming off of Macomb. The proposal is to convert a portion of a vacant building on the southwest side that's fronting Macomb Street to be a Tasty Freeze shop. In addition to seats inside, they will also have outside seating on a patio along Macomb. The zoning for this is MSD, Macomb Street District. The ordinance is irrelevant. Article 7 MSD, Macomb Street District, and Article 21 Site Plan Review. Under Article 21, something called a sketch plan is identified for small type projects. And we are reviewing this application under those standards tonight. It is a single review by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will make a decision. I would expect the Planning Commission to vote tonight. This particular application was one that I kind of got involved with, with Brian and staff. When I looked at it, it does meet the standards for a sketch plan review. And we had a choice as to whether to review it administratively or to bring up in front of the Planning Commission. In light of the fact that it has a lot of visibility along Macomb Street with the outdoor seating and the like, I thought it was best that this be brought up in front of the Planning Commission for everybody's input and decision. So that's why you're seeing it tonight, and I would assume that we will vote on it at the end of the discussion. That completes the introduction. Brian, would you please talk through it in a little more detail?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody. So, first case here, go ahead and tune out if you want because this is going to be a bit redundant of what John just presented in the intro, so...
That's okay. You're doing a much better job.
Well, I have graphics. I mean, I have to use them. So, this is, so this is the whole of Victorian Commons. It is a mixed-use development within the Macomb Street District. As you may recall, it was a few years ago, they incorporated some residential into what had previously been predominantly office and/or service and/or retail types of uses. So, they've incorporated some residential into it. There's a solid mix there. The building or the unit, excuse me, that we're talking about is, as noted, the southwest unit on the site was the former home of a bank. I have to tell you that admittedly, the actual name of what that bank was escapes me. So, it's really neither here nor there anyway, but there was a bank there. Okay. Okay. So, it was a bank. It has, it has been unoccupied for a bit of time. And staff and myself, and then we introduced the project to John. But previously, we had a couple of meetings with the petitioners to kind of go over their idea, their concept plans, to take them from sort of the idea to where they are tonight, which is with a much more detailed plan for your review and consideration. So, as John mentioned, the other part of it, the really highly visible part, is the outdoor seating portion. So, the ordinance does allow outdoor seating accessory to this type of use. It's by right, so we're not dealing with any type of special land use or anything. There really aren't any additional standards applied to it. But so you're aware, again, it's because this will be a pretty visible change for people driving and/or walking up and down Macomb Street. As John mentioned, this is sketch plan review, so that's why, even though the, the submittal is pretty detailed, quite honestly, for a sketch plan, but you don't have maybe all of the site details you would have with a full site plan for a brand-new development because the majority of what they're doing is internal. The external changes are a little bit of building modification, plus the outdoor seating, plus for Commissioner Pollak's enjoyment, a bicycle parking slash bike rack area as well. So, I told them that in order to get Commissioner Pollak's vote, they should strongly consider incorporating that. That's a joke, by the way, so, sorry. So, so I'm going to go through a few of these slides. I apologize for the quality of these. I did not have PDFs of the submittal, so I literally stood on my desk and tried to take the squarest picture I could. And you can tell that I didn't do a great job of that. But I didn't fall off the desk either, so that's a positive. So, this is sort of the overall site plan of the front portion. This is the subject building. This other suite is currently occupied by a real estate office. And then this is the proposed Tasty Freeze ice cream shop. And then you can see in a little bit more detail, the outdoor seating area to the front, as well as I mentioned, the bike rack slash bike parking pad, which would be on the east side of the sidewalk, connecting the public sidewalk with the private entry to this particular unit. So, this one is just a zoomed-in version of that same thing so that you can fully see the outdoor seating area. They are identifying five small tables with four chairs each, covered with umbrellas. Pretty typical, I think, of what you'd see in this type of a setting. One other important note I want to point out is this detail up at the very top of the page, and that is a railing that is proposed along the west side of the outdoor seating area. When this was a bank, you can see the concrete pad here, the concrete line, this was a drive-thru. So, this bank had a drive-thru lane. And so technically, I mean, the driveway literally comes up almost to the edge of this outdoor seating space. So, the inclusion of some level of barrier, I think we thought was appropriate from the beginning. And the petitioners installed kind of a decorative wrought-iron-style, black aluminum fence that will at least prevent people from accidentally stepping out into the driveway. If a car really wants to plow through that, they're going to plow through that, but I don't, I don't believe that's likely to occur. So, I do believe that'll provide a nice little level of protection for the folks using the outdoor seating area. This is a blow-up of the floor plan. It's not really something we would often, we don't really have any review standards over this, but I wanted you to see it. I wanted it on the screen. I wanted the public to be able to see it. As the chairman mentioned, there are a couple of dedicated tables, and there are, there's also some sort of high-top stool seating areas also within the use. The proposed service area would be at this counter in this location. So, these would be your, your two basically takeout spots or your ordering lines, however you want to refer to it. You have your back-of-house stuff in the kitchen. They are incorporating a small office area for business management, et cetera, bookkeeping, whatever may go on, as well as a new bathroom that would also be, would serve as a barrier-free design bathroom. So, that, those will all be part of the interior improvements. As far as the exterior improvements, they're also proposing a new doorway, ingress egress, from the front of the building. So, that does not currently exist. So, there would be another doorway so that you have easy access to and from the outdoor patio area. And they are also incorporating some new windows within this area, sort of to match the rest of the look of the building. So, what you'll have is a front facade that I think is maybe a little bit more inviting than what it was previously. Anytime we can get an actual ingress point off of the sidewalk, that's always a good thing. So, this will have a connection right off the patio, which is access right off the sidewalk. So, I think that that's a nice feature that will ultimately be a benefit. And then you all do have a copy of my written review letter, so just a few points of summary, as, again, we've kind of alluded to most of these or directly referenced them. So, this is a change in use from a bank, basically from a permitted use to another permitted use. So, it qualifies for a sketch plan review rather than a full site plan review, which incorporates a number of additional details we would need to consider. The use, as well as the accessory outdoor seating, are by right uses in the MSD. I do put a note in here because I wanted to make sure, I've already explained this to the petitioner, and they understood it, but I wanted to make sure everybody else, again, was on the same page. Because the bank had that drive-thru lane, there's still, it's still kind of set up for a drive-thru. Now, going from a bank with a drive-thru lane, which up to, I think, having just the one lane, I believe, is by right, converting that to a quote-unquote "restaurant" with a drive-thru lane is a whole different scenario. So, if they were to decide they wanted to try to incorporate the drive-thru, that would put them in a position to need special land use review in addition to site plan. So, it does change the function of the driveway quite a bit. You need more stacking spaces for a restaurant-type of use than you do for a bank. So, there would be some site implications if they wanted to pursue that. As it's been presented to us, as is included in the submittal, they're not currently proposing to use that drive-thru lane. So, I wanted to make sure that was clear, too. If they, they get through kind of their first summer of business, they decide in the future that, boy, we would, we could really use the help of a drive-thru lane. It would really boost our sales. That's great, but they'll have to come up with a new plan, and they'll have to come back before Planning Commission to go through that review process. So, wanted to, again, make sure everybody was clear on that. I did have a, I had a couple of kind of minor suggestions, one of which they probably already planned to include, but I wanted to sort of confirm it this evening and even potentially attach it into a condition if you were to take favorable action. But in the, just the floor plan layout of the outdoor patio area, they didn't have an area specified for a simple trash can. I do think that one is warranted exactly where it goes. Doesn't really matter to me. Should probably be outside of kind of the main walking areas, but I do think they should incorporate one. I'd hate to see, if, if trash removal, if throwing things away is inconvenient for the patrons, then there's a higher likelihood that we end up with trash and debris flying around the site, or worse, flying around Macomb Street. So, I did think it was, again, a consideration. My guess is they probably already planned to include it, but because I didn't see it, I wanted to make sure I brought it up. So, I did put that forth as a suggestion, and then just sort of a commitment from the applicant that they will take care of it. You know, it should be, if they're really busy and it needs to be emptied multiple times a day, then empty it multiple times a day, that kind of a thing, so that we don't end up with a nuisance-type scenario. The other suggestion is tied to just kind of a general site improvement, and this was about the only thing I could really find. The site itself is in really nice condition still, but there is a bit of a gap, if you look in this area in the greenbelt. And basically, I just measured off based on the plans I had from driveway to driveway. There's a requirement for four greenbelt trees in this area. My thought was because we're utilizing some of the greenbelt for this new outdoor seating area, I thought it might make sense, or might be an opportune time, to try to get some more trees in this area to bring the site closer to compliance. Now, my written review letter, I think, stated that four are required, and I didn't see any, or didn't see none are proposed, but I was trying to look at existing. I focused on the plan and completely ignored the fact that the aerial clearly shows there's one or two trees. I did drive by tonight, and I would say there are, there's two in this area that I would count as greenbelt trees. So, my opinion, I'd say they're probably deficient two in this area because there are some trees the further east you go as well. So, I was really just kind of focused, if you can follow my cursor, I was really focused just on this area. Certainly something we can discuss, representative of the ownership is here as well. It's always hard when you have a situation where we have a tenant and an owner, and to try to encumber the tenant with the requirement for a site improvement is always a little tricky. But again, because I knew we would have these parties in front of us, I thought it was at least a valuable discussion for us to have. And if ultimately, you don't believe they need to put in any trees, that's fine, too. But I, again, I saw an opportunity to at least bring it up, and that was my intent. The other item, this goes back to the building, and that is, I don't have, I meant to take a picture of it tonight, and I did not do it. So, there are two spots. So, when the bank left, there's a former ATM machine, and then I'm not really sure what the other one is, but if you've driven by there, there's two big sheets of plywood that are covering presumably equipment and/or something that was removed when the bank left. So, that kind of caught our attention. That was another thing where, again, we see a condition of a building, we have a proposed new tenant in before us for consideration. Wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be essentially a more permanent-type condition. So, we have had some conversations with the applicant as well as the DDA director, who's been a really good conduit between us and the applicant and the owner. And it's my understanding that the owner does have a plan for some, for some facade improvements throughout the complex, so not just this building, but the others. And it's my understanding that that plywood is not intended as a, a long-term solution, and that it will be removed and covered up appropriately. I thought that this was, again, an opportunity to have the, the owner discuss that with you, just make you aware of what their plans are. And it would, to me, it would be nice to know. I mean, there, we've got a tenant, wants to fill a suite in the building. That suite in the building has some exterior things that probably aren't the way they should be, so this is an opportunity to make sure that's going to be corrected moving forward as well. My final two comments, one is just simply a note for the applicant to be aware of, is that if sketch plan approval is granted, that does not constitute sign approval. So, if and when they wish to install a sign, be it on the building or be it on the existing ground sign, they'll need to come in for a permit through Community Development. And then lastly, the way the project's been presented to us, again, the, the outdoor seating area, the furniture, we've been informed, the furniture is going to be removed and stored seasonally. So, at whatever point in the season, you know, after Labor Day, between Memorial and Labor Day, it's out, and outside of that, it will be away and stored either here or off-site somewhere, but not here. So, you wouldn't have tables and chairs just sitting outside through the winter months. I just wanted, again, confirmation that that is in fact the case. That is what we have been informed. My thought was that as long as that is actually part of the applicant's intent, my suggestion was that you all include that as a condition if you were to consider favorable action this evening. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Anybody have any questions for Brian before we move to the applicant? Who'd you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, I, I know you addressed it briefly in your comments about the drive-through window, and I'm just, I guess I'm not fully understanding the difference, how, how using it as a drive-through one car at a time for an ice cream shop versus one car at a time for a bank. What is the difference there? I don't mean to argue the point.
No, you're fine.
I'm just curious what it would be.
Your ordinance identifies them as separate uses. There are drive-throughs associated with the bank, there are drive-throughs associated with the restaurant use. So, they're, they're separate categories. With the bank is permitted, with the restaurant is a special land use. So, we can't skip that process. So, they would have to get special land use approval. The other is that your ordinance requires more stacking spaces for a drive-through window attached to a restaurant.
Meaning back, other cars backing up.
Right. So, it would be, right, so it would be a car at the window, and then how many, how much space do you have for vehicles to queue in line behind that vehicle at the window?
Understood.
Typically, restaurant uses require more stacking than does a bank. Now, oftentimes, banks actually have more than one drive-through lane, so the fact that, you know, it's the actual usage of how this drive-through lane worked may have been more similar to how the restaurant would function, but in the eyes of the ordinance, they are very distinctly two different things.
Well, I, I remember it was quite a process to have the bank get permission for the drive-through window. But, but so basically, you're saying, too, according to the ordinance, if another bank were to occupy the space, they could use the drive-through, but because now it is a restaurant, there is a different set of rules and standards.
Correct. It's attached to the change in use, so then we have to apply all the standards to that particular use moving forward.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Very good. Then, if no other questions for Brian, let's hear from Mr. Zubkey. Would you please come on up, introduce yourself to the Planning Commission, and tell us about your new business?
My name is Jeff Zubkey, future owner of the Tasty Freeze.
Have we got a microphone there for you?
Okay, my name is Jeff Zubkey, future owner of the Tasty Freeze. What, what would you like to know?
When, when were you looking to begin construction, and when would it be open?
Well, as soon as we leave here, hopefully.
That's pretty quick. So, are you going to be opening for business here in June, I assume?
Well, we, we hope to, you know, it's, there, that's not far away, you know. There's a lot to do, but we do hope to move right along, you know. I'm in the construction, but I'm a plumbing contractor, so, you know, we have a few resources to get things moving a little faster, so...
I think that would help.
Yes, yes.
Now, are you going to have a, is it, your business is going to be seasonal, or are you going to stay open 12 months a year, or do you know yet?
We would like to stay open all year, yes. You know, so, and, you know, coffee possibly, and donuts with ice cream, you know, soft drinks, but yes, we would, we would like to be all year long.
Going to be making any, any hamburgers or anything like that?
I, I don't know about that. That, that may be down the road sometime, but I, I don't think that's, that would be right away. We want to, we want to make this experience, you know, kind of perfect that first, you know, so...
Okay. Well, I think it'd be a nice new addition for Macomb.
We, we sure think so. Yeah, we've got a lot of positive feedback throughout the whole island, you know, there are a lot of excitement, and we're really looking forward to it also.
Well, let's see if any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Zubkey. Any questions at the moment?
Will you be scooping ice cream and soft-serve, or?
Both, and sugar-free.
Excellent.
There's going to be a few flavors that, you know, will be sugar-free also.
Will you be, do you have a creamery picked out, or will you be making your own, or?
It is actually Mackinac Island Creamery. It's, they have just a ton of the real fun flavors, especially, they, they have a little story behind every flavor that we're going to put in a pamphlet at the door for people to look through. And Guernsey actually makes the base for, which is a really, I guess, great ice cream, you know, I like it. But they, they have, Mackinac Island Creamery has all its own flavors. And that's, you know, we figured, hey, we're on an island, why not choose Mackinac Island Creamery?
And you'll have frequent flyer discounts?
Naturally. Yeah, we hope to, it, we want it to be a really good experience, a lot of, our, our kids grew up on the island. I don't know, there just never was a lot, a meeting place, let's say, you know, and now that I have six grandkids and another one on the way, I need a lot of ice cream.
Okay. Have you thought about the question that Brian raised about the furniture removal?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, we wouldn't leave that, that out there, that, it'd ruin it if we left that out there all winter, you know.
Okay, so you've got a place to put it?
I've got storage, yeah. I've, I've got the, the plumbing shop a couple doors down, and I've got two garages. That's, they're only 36 by 36 steel tables, you know, with the umbrella holder in the middle, so they're very easy, and they won't take up a lot of room, you know, to store.
Okay, so they'll be in and out, in and out with the summer and winter?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
And I don't know whether this would be you to address or the, or the property owner, but the other issues that Brian raised were the two trees and the plywood. Is that something that we talked to you about, or we talked to?
Well, the, the trees, you know, like around the bike area, I'm sure, we're, we're going to line the front and around that bike pad with some type of shrubbery, for sure, you know. That way, they're kind of not riding across the rest of the lawn to get to the pad, you know, to park their bicycles or strollers or, you know, bikes with the little trailers on them, you know. But in the, I don't know if you've seen, across the parking lot, B&amp;B Construction, they've redone their whole facade. Well, the owner is, that's what they're duplicating, the whole area in there is, you know, there's, I believe their permits have already been submitted to redo everything there. So, that's just a matter of when they get their permits. They're getting ready to get started, I'm assuming, real soon.
Okay, well, we'll ask the, the owner.
Sure.
Here in a moment. Anything else you'd like to add about your business? It sounds exciting.
We, we're really excited. We're, we're looking forward to, you know, getting the doors open and scooping ice cream.
Have a nice grand opening.
Yeah, wonderful, we sure will, yeah.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Zubkey?
I do have one, and then maybe for Mr. Zubkey, or maybe it's for the property owner. First of all, I just want to say, you know, thank you for, you know, thinking about Groseal and adding to, you know, like I said, we do need potential meeting spots.
Please speak into the microphone, though, if, they, they won't be able to hear you online.
Okay. I'll, I'll pretty much eat the microphone at this point, but I'll pretend it's an ice cream cone. So anyways, you know, I was thanking you for, you know, considering Groseal, and great to see that we're reusing some of the properties that are out there. Looking forward to bringing my kids with me. I'm very happy to hear about the sugar-free. I have a daughter that needs, you know, sugar-free, you know, treats, so that's great to have that option available. One thing I was wondering about is, you know, if there definitely aren't plans for a drive-through in the future, and it doesn't negatively impact parking circulation, which maybe Mr. Borden would be able to comment on, I was wondering if you'd think about potentially closing off the driveway, at least, you know, seasonally, with the use of maybe some, you know, large planters and such, where you can have some more, you know, flora and vegetation, and so, you know, create a better experience for the, you know, the outdoor seating to begin with, and it would actually, you know, green up the area, and so we're talking about like the greenbelt and things that, you're just, you're adding a little bit more aesthetics to the area if you really don't need the driveway.
I, I do know that, at one time, I thought that was, wasn't it one-way? You know, I know now they kind of go both ways through there.
It was definitely one-way.
It was one-way, yes. And, but as far as, you know, the, you know, closing it off, that, I guess that really wouldn't be up to me, you know, the, the owner would probably...
Let's put that question to the owner.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks again.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Zubkey. Why don't you just?
I have a question.
Oh, I didn't see you, sorry.
I don't know if it's to address either it's Brian, the owner, or not, but fencing, I did see that you had fencing suggested on the west side, which is great, because there is that driveway. And we don't really do it on Macomb, but does it make sense, and I guess this is a question even for the Planning Commission, if it makes sense to put like a, it doesn't have to be a full fence, but along the, the street access, is it, do like a roping or something as a reminder to the kids, right? Because the majority of the people at your restaurant are going to be children, does it make sense to have like a reminder between the spot where the patio is, where you're going to be eating?
Yes.
In the road? It doesn't have to be a fence, but maybe there's something, like, I'm thinking like a rope or something.
I was actually thinking of, of putting the fence along that, you know, between the sidewalk and the patio. and the patio, you know, but on the patio, you know, along the whole front, only because for that reason, too. It's kind of keeping that little L shape and keeping everybody contained, especially children.
I don't want you to feel like you're caged in eating your ice cream.
No, no, no.
If you can leave it open, but I just was like a reminder, hey, you know, there's a road there.
It would only be like a three-foot fence, you know, like a, you know, that wrought iron look, the aluminum. But even, you know, like you're saying, like, maybe like a rope or a chain thing, but I was just thinking of the kids, too, there's probably going to be a lot of little ones running around on the patio, and if there was something across the front also, you know, that just leaves the, that portion, you know, toward the sidewalk, you know, that's open.
Brian, do you notice that with Macomb Street District, is that, because it's not common, but a lot of the places on Macomb aren't for outside dining?
Right.
So like the hardware store wouldn't have that, right, and things like that, but here we are, we have this, it's different, does that, does Macomb Street District have anything in place for outdoor eating?
I mean, there's nothing.
I know Lloyd's has.
Lloyd's does have.
Lloyd's has a fenced-in patio.
Leave that as enclosed on the sidewalk side.
Right.
Part of that, however, is, I think, at least partially due to the fact that they serve alcohol.
Okay.
Outside. So I think you have to have an enclosure when you're serving alcohol. I think that's, that's under your liquor license, essentially. You have to enclose the space so people can't just go in and out. So this would be a little different. I don't believe that it's required, I think if, if the commission and the owner both think that there's some value and benefit to it, I would, my suggestion would probably be just to extend that same style fencing along the south side of the patio area.
Man, I don't want to ruin the aesthetics of what you're trying to get out of outdoor seating, having your ice cream.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I, with, you know, the little ones, you know, I'm sure, you know, when there's a crowd there, maybe on a Friday or Saturday, or you got the soccer kids, or the baseball, or, you know, the little ones, there might be, you know, a lot of little ones on that patio to where if there is a fence in the front, it's, I think it would actually benefit, make me feel better.
I think it'll allow the grandparents to relax a little bit more.
There you go, yeah, yeah.
I think, I think that's, I think that's a terrific idea, you know, it's not just cars, it's also bicycles zipping along that sidewalk.
Exactly.
You know, and, and, you know, a little kid stepping out in the wrong direction at the wrong time could get hit with a bicycle, you know, so if you're, if you are amenable to that idea, well, included is in addition.
Yeah.
That's a great idea, Jim.
I try. You're done for the night.
Okay, any other comments from Mr. Zupke, and then we'll go to the owner. Why don't you just kind of hang out there for a little while, we'll see if there are any more questions.
Mr. Chair, if I, could I just jump in real quickly?
Sure.
Just because it was in my notes, just while he's still up there, can, are you okay with the idea of just having a trash can on the patio somewhere?
There will be multiple trash cans on the patio.
That's all I needed to hear.
A minimum of two, for sure, you know, I don't know why that wasn't, we just must have forgot.
It's a pretty minor detail, I don't, like I said, just because I didn't see it, it just forced me to kind of bring it up, but I kind of figured you were doing that all along, so, great, thanks.
The owner of Slats Enterprises, is he here or she here?
Mr. Chair, while he's, while she's coming up, the reason we bring up using the microphones is not so much for us listening here, but the board gets a lot of complaints from people watching either on cable or online, that they can't hear what is being said, and one of the things they keep telling us to do is to talk into the microphones, so, and that podium is adjustable if it makes it easier to reach the microphone, so.
How am I doing?
Very good.
Good.
If you want, you know, they even put a note up for here, for us, it's like, if you want people to hear you, you have to speak into the mic.
Very good. Amy Conley, Slats Enterprises, we are.
Amy?
Amy, yes, sir.
Amy, okay, welcome, Amy.
Thank you.
You are Slats Enterprises?
Yes, sir.
All right.
One of the team.
Well, you've heard our discussion tonight, we were interested in your, your feedback on some of the questions that were more owner-related than user-related.
Absolutely.
Would you care to talk a little bit about these? These would be the trees out front, the requirement for two trees, which Brian mentioned, the problem with the plywood on the backside, well, the west side of the building, was another one, and then the thought that Brian had down there about that driveway on the backside.
Very good, okay, I will address the exterior of that building first. We actually have a plan in process right now, we are in the permit phase with the township to redo the exterior of not only that building, but the north building as well. So each of those three buildings are going to mirror the B&amp;B building that was already completed last year. So B&amp;B is doing the work, so it's going to be identical to the, to the east building there now, so it's going to, the siding will be replaced with a vinyl shake siding, the brick is going to be removed, stone will be put in its place around the entire perimeter of that building. So obviously, those holes that were a ATM and a bank night deposit will be sealed up, we'll go ahead and frame that in, and then side that appropriately.
And what is your timing on the building in question, one with the Tasty Freeze?
Well, as soon as we're allowed to get started, we absolutely will, we are working, hopefully within the next two weeks.
Oh, well, that's fantastic.
We've already got doors on order, some windows on order, we're also going to be redoing the posts out front, the concrete sidewalk underneath the awning as well, and all those buildings, so it's quite a large process.
Will you be doing the modifications to the building for the windows and the door?
We're going to be working in conjunction with the Zupkes, we've already got their plans with our plans as well with B&amp;B, so we're going to be working in tandem to make sure that we're not duplicating any efforts.
Okay, well, that's, that sounds very good. So the plywood's taken care of, the trees will be okay, two trees?
We will absolutely take that into consideration. I'm a little concerned about the size of the bike pad and how we would fit a couple more trees in there, but we would absolutely be willing to look at it. We are also in the process of getting some permits to replace the sign out front, and it's going to be quite a bit larger, it's going to have space for their business, as well as B&amp;B, Carol Bolo, and then a sign for the apartments as well, so that's going to be kind of a large undertaking as well, it's going to also match the buildings as well. So as long as we can fit it all in there, you know, we would absolutely be willing to talk about that.
Well, the two trees, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a discretionary factor?
Absolutely. Planning commission always has the ability to waive or modify landscape, especially in consideration of an existing site. I think, as you all know, and this wasn't trying to be punitive upon the owner or anything like that, anytime I see something that's deficient, it's kind of my job to make sure I bring it up, so that was something that jumped out at me, and personally, I mean, I'm, given the way that site lays out, there is definitely, I maybe wouldn't call it a berm, but there's definitely an elevation of the green belt above the parking, this is not a scenario where the parking really jumps out at you when you're driving by. Would some more trees be nice? Of course they would, but is it absolutely, you know, necessary for this instance? Probably not.
Okay. And Brian, would you put your question, please, or your comment?
Certainly. So my question had to do with the driveway, and I didn't know if it's currently being used at all, if it's necessary for parking circulation, and if not, would it be, be amenable to closing it down, or at least with some, you know, planters or something, which can be moved if you need to get, you know, some larger vehicle back through there, but for the most part closes off the driveway, so that way it makes it a little safer for the people that will be out on that patio.
Good question, actually, and the way that I understand it to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, you might even know, that because of the frontage that we have there on Macomb Street, we're required to have multiple curb cuts there. I think originally, we are not the original owners of the building, but the curb cut, the second curb cut would have been right in front of where their shop is going to be. They closed that off when the bank petitioned to have the drive-through put in, because they are not allowed more than the two curb cuts. So if we were to block that off, I believe we would have to open up that original curb cut, but in doing so, we're going to have to remove their bike rack and our sign that we're getting ready to install. So again, we wouldn't be opposed to talking about it, but I think that we just need to make sure logistically that it makes sense.
Thank you.
Who else might have questions for Amy? Any questions? Jay, we'll start with you.
Yeah, just to finish the thought on the, on that last question, maybe not finish, but further that discussion, that might be something worth discussing, that's probably a more of a fire safety question, public safety question, might be worth putting that question to police and fire, see if there's any concern, and, and like you said, if it's a temporary block, it might be a different story than if it's a permanent block, but I don't have a strong feeling either way, but if you're, if you think it would look good and add to the safety, you know, I think that might be the way to pursue that. I did, and this is maybe, it's a combination of a comment and a question, maybe, on the subject of the landscape plan, Mr. Zupke, I think you mentioned that you wanted to do some landscaping around the, the bike parking and that sort of thing.
Yes.
I mean, it may be, depending on what that looks like, it may be a perfect opportunity to kind of substitute a couple of large trees for some smaller bushes and that sort of thing, especially if you look at the, you know, the overhead, you're taking out the grass in front of the building, you know, to the south of the building, you're taking out part of the grass coming east of there, so it becomes a smaller area with a sign right in the middle, and if you put trees there, it may inhibit the ability to see the sign and/or the business, which you probably don't want to do, and I think you don't get a feel like you're looking at a sea of parking lot from there, because there is some good planning in the, that berm across, you know, that shoots up the middle of the parking area. I think that might be an ideal way to solve that issue, but that's just a question, is that something you're willing to commit to, to put that landscaping around there, or?
Well, I don't know if you're aware, like the burning bushes, the small bushes that turn yellow and red?
Those are excellent for, like, even across the front, in the front, between the sidewalk and the fence, that one foot, and then possibly around that, that, the bike pad, you know, so that way they're not just running across the grass, you know, to get onto the pad, you know, which they're inexpensive and they look great, especially in the fall and summer in the fall, you know, especially when they turn color, they look really nice.
Sure.
That was, that's the extent of mine, I, I'll add my two cents, I'm excited, I was cheered on on my way out the door by my kids. Make sure that happens, fast. But no, it's, it's an exciting addition to Macomb Street, nice visibility, nice gathering place, it sounds like you got the right attitude about the whole thing, it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Dan, your comments, please.
You know, again, I think the Tasty Freeze will be a nice addition to Macomb Street, I'm looking forward to seeing it, and I also, I always like to see the vacant spaces on Macomb filled, that'll be nice. As far as the trees, I do think substituting the landscape is a nice option, especially being that, you know, the trees could obstruct the other businesses, and I'd like to keep those businesses successful also, to avoid vacant spaces. And I think anybody with kids would appreciate having a fence across the front or some type of barrier, barrier there with young kids. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dan. Brian, additional comments?
No further comments.
Okay. Uta?
I think everyone's kind of addressing the same concerns that I had.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Nothing more to add.
Thank you, Jim?
I'm all set.
You're all set? Okay, well, then I would entertain a motion, please, regarding this application.
I move that we approve the sketch plan review number one as submitted for the Tasty Freeze.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as submitted, may I, may I suggest that we also include the substitution of the burning bush plants for the, for the two trees as recommended, you know, subject, and that would be subject to administrative review. Brian, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, I mean, unless you wanted to see it again, but.
Okay, and also the fence extending along the front of Macomb Street, as we discussed, the wrought iron fence as additions, were there any other, other changes, Brian, that we said trash cans were taken care of?
Trash cans I'm comfortable with, I would, I would suggest you incorporate the, the idea that the outdoor furniture will be removed and stored seasonally kind of thing, however you want to phrase that is fine, I just, I'd like that as a condition, that way there, you know, there isn't any confusion moving forward, whether it's, you know, you never know what's going to happen in five years and maybe an ownership change, you just never know, so I would rather we just cement that in so we know that it's not going to be just sitting out there.
Okay, so that becomes a third condition to the amendment, friendly amendment, Eric?
Yes, friendly amendment, just one clarification on the burning bush, we want to be that specific about type of, of bush, should we want to say subject to administrative review?
Subject to administrative review.
If I could add with the seasonality of the furniture, you know, you, as an example, Brian, you had said Memorial Day to Labor Day, but basically warm weather versus cold weather, we don't want to tie their hands.
Whenever that may be, we're still, we're still waiting for the warm weather now.
Halloween is in there, you know.
Exactly.
Right, right, as soon as you can sit on it without freezing.
Right, right.
All right, did we miss anything in the motion? We have, we need a second.
Second.
Have a second from Uta. Any further discussion?
Just a further discussion, asking if we need public safety to ask about the driveway, if they're be able to make it more of a temporary driveway, is having the, you know, potentially blocking it off except for emergency access. I think anytime that we can close an additional driveway, that's not going to negatively impact a business along Macomb Street, it makes it more walkable and bikeable, you know, if you have little kids, you know, you, you know very well that they start to dart out, and so if you don't have a driveway where somebody's going to be turning in because they can see that it's blocked off, you minimize that conflict.
Okay, we have a friendly amendment, Eric, to, to consider police and fire input into, well, public safety input into potentially closing off the driveway.
So under that verbiage, I'm fine with that, Brian, is it all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Uta, you're the second, is that all right with you?
Yep.
Okay, so we're not saying, we're not saying close it off, what we're saying is, is find out the facts, and then if it fits your plan to potentially do it, do it.
Yeah, we'll absolutely look into that.
Is fire and safety the only one that would consider that? Just because when I look at this, if you have one driveway for all those businesses, including the apartments, it looks like you're going to bottleneck it. We talked about this when we did the gas station, right, we're like, oh, we were all talking about having this narrow, this narrow spot for the gas station, we're like, what about the boats, what about this, what about that, and then all of a sudden you're going to have everyone coming in and out of one driveway, it looks like the flow is you come in the one, and you probably leave out the other, it seems like the flow is there, is it, is it beyond fire and safety that we want?
That's a question for Brian.
I mean, there really, other than, I mean, our typical access management standards, which to get a new curb cut, we look at driveway spacing, we look at driveway alignment across the street, given this is an existing curb cut, there really aren't any zoning provisions that are going to come into play, so I would probably just defer to the public safety idea. I think that's, that would be fine, and if they don't need it and then can come to some type of arrangement with, with the owner, you know, that would, that would have to work itself out, but if they do need it, then to me, it's kind of case closed, but I think that's the appropriate, those are the appropriate parties to, to speak with.
I'm a little unclear what the proposal is, is it, yeah, let's say we, we go to public safety and public safety says they're fine with it, is it then the owner's prerogative to talk to tenants and make a, make a decision on whether they think it's a good idea for the, for that property as a whole?
That was my understanding. Brian, is that your understanding?
That's my understanding as well, I don't want to do anything to impact the businesses, but if there's agreement there, I think it's a win-win.
Good, yeah, I think that the Tasty Freeze is going to bring in quite a bit of traffic, so that does concern me somewhat, just to have one entrance and exit. Also, with Carol Bolo Real Estate, they're incredibly busy as well, there are days when, you know, there's, there's meetings and a lot of people coming and going, so we would like to discuss it with them as well, to make sure that, again, we're not hurting anyone's business.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think too, now that Jim raised the point, when you do look at it, there are a lot of cars in that parking lot, and I think public safety would really want to look at, you know, the opportunity for an emergency ingress or egress with, if you, if we restricted it down to just that one, that, so I certainly would like to hear what public safety recommends.
Okay, so I think we're in agreement on what we're, what we're asking for here. Basically, it's that you, as the owner, ask the question, get an answer from public safety, and then make a judgment accordingly based on your business needs. and then make a judgment accordingly based on your business needs.
Very good.
Clear enough?
Fair enough.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, unanimous. Thank you very much. We look forward to the grand opening.
Looking forward to having you there.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For you.
Okay, let's move on. Next item is a pre-application for a lot reconfiguration. The applicants are Randy and Marie Conflitti of 8319 Macomb. The location of the lot legally is lots 105, A1A, A1B, and B, which doesn't make a lot of sense unless you have a flat map in front of you. The common description is 8319 Macomb. This is on the southwest corner of the Macomb and Park Lane intersection. At present, well, this is a lot reconfiguration. Currently, there are three lots that are there. One lot has two primary residences on it, and the other two just have like a driveway and sidewalk. So it's, there's no buildings on the other two. So it's, from a zoning standpoint, it's somewhat conflicted, you might say. And the reconfiguration is meant to basically correct this. It would end up with still three lots, but the three lots would be such that two of the lots would have the principal residences on them. The third would be vacant. Okay? And the one that would be vacant would have frontage along Macomb. So probably a little bit easier when Brian shows you a map, but.
Or not.
Or not, okay. But the zoning on this is Macomb Street District. The ordinances that are relevant are 19.21, that's lot splits and reconsolidations, and Article VII, Macomb Street District. The review process under Article 19 is multi-step for a lot reconfiguration. Pre-application conference, which is what we're holding tonight, followed by a separate meeting for planning commission review and decision. And then if it gets recommended to the township board, they ultimately approve it. So we're at step one. This is an opportunity for the applicant to kind of show us what's going on here. There are some, some interesting subtleties here regarding easements and, and access and that make this not quite so automatically straightforward. So we'll have a good discussion on it tonight and it'll be, will give some direction to the applicant and hopefully see them again in the future. So Brian, would you come up and talk a little bit about this?
Thank you again. Let me get back on track here. Here we go. Okay. Again, another great explanation. I'm hoping that between the survey plan map and the aerial photo, we can kind of make heads and tails of this. Because I think my drawing probably will goof it up even more, but we'll see how you guys feel about that. So this is our subject site. As Chairman noted, it's comprised of three separate parcels. There is a, basically, there, there are three long, narrow parcels off of Macomb Street. So if you were to look at this and kind of think, one, and then two with the houses in the middle, and then three that's kind of vacant, moving to the west. So again, I've oriented this such north as actually to the right. So make sure that we're all looking at this the same way. Again, as noted, this is, this is all Macomb Street. So we've got some varying dimensional issues here, which actually provides some flexibility in what the applicant is looking to do. It does work out pretty well. There is also, as the chairman mentioned, a couple of things about some easements. So as part of their submittal thus far, the applicant has indicated that they are going to grant certain easements to the township. One of which is that, and we're still, let me take one step back. So we still have a little bit of research to do. We have some other departments we have to meet with. We haven't done the full formal review of this yet. So I'm just kind of giving you sort of the, the high-level overview. And then as we kind of get further in the process, I'll have a lot more detail for you. But, so this parcel that fronts Park Lane has the public sidewalk across it. But there don't, there does not appear to have ever been an easement obtained for maintenance upkeep of that sidewalk, or even its installation, quite frankly. So that part's a little, a little odd, to put it politely. So we're trying to figure out exactly what's occurred there. Regardless, the petitioner has indicated that they, they're absolutely willing to grant an easement back to the township if we find that one does not exist. Their research to date, they have not found that one exists. So that's sort of the model we're progressing off of. The other is that you see this driveway here, and I wish I could flip the photo now, but, so this driveway is actually used to access this residence and also to continue back to, this is township property back here. So this is the, I don't even know what we call it these days, but it's, I know it's somehow connected to, it's a building that's for use.
By the fire department.
By the fire department for off-site meetings, something or other, not entirely sure. But to get there, you have to cross the applicant's properties to do so. So this is another case where they have offered up an easement over the driveway to ensure that they have adequate lawful access to this property. Now, one comment on that, so a bit of new information, and I mentioned this to the applicant before the meeting, and we'll follow up with this as well. Lori discussed this with the fire chief, and he actually indicated that the township does have an easement over this driveway currently. So this is a case where, again, the applicant's records did not unearth an existing easement. Fire chief pulled a file from who knows when and basically has documentation that there is an easement over it. So we'll, we'll get that clarified when this becomes a more formal submittal for you. The reality is that if an easement already exists and the township is happy with it, then there's no need to make any changes to that. So we won't need to add that if it already exists. But we'll, again, we'll get to the bottom of that. So this is the map I thought might, it looks better on paper, but I figured on screen it would be a little trickier. So my intent was to kind of try to color code this thing. So if you follow the, the pinkish highlight and the one, two, and three, I mentioned these are very deep, narrow lots fronting Macomb. So there's your one, your two, your three. So that's how they exist today with that pink highlight. As proposed is the green slash whatever green and pink highlighter combined makes here. It shows okay here, but, so this is, this would be one parcel as proposed, sort of combining the southern third of these three parcels with an existing residence. As part of this, they're also proposing to relocate the smaller detached accessory building. So this building here, if you can see that little square where my cursor is, would be located onto this parcel. The second parcel then would be this odd shade of green highlight, which comprises the northerly parts of one and two, also with existing residents. And this is the parcel that has the larger detached accessory building. So if you've driven by, you've seen it. If you've not, it's this guy right here hidden behind that tree. But, so the end result is we have two parcels, each of which have a residence and an accessory building, which is generally what we want to see. And then we have a third that is currently undeveloped, that could be developed at a future date. It is of sufficient width and area such that it could accommodate another use there. Probably would end up being a residence. Macomb Street allows single-family residential, it allows a host of other uses, as you're well aware. Given where this in, where this, where this is in terms of the surrounding land uses, we have other residential on this side of the street. Given the size and shape of the lot, it's probably conducive for another single-family residence. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's what they're restricted to. They could pursue some other type of development so long as the property can accommodate it. It would be a little tricky because you'll end up with a building, you'll need a drive, and you'll need a parking lot for a commercial use. So given that size and shape, commercial redevelopment there, or commercial development there could be a little tricky, but it doesn't mean that it couldn't happen. So I'm presuming and projecting that it would probably be residential in nature. So again, I just put together a really brief memo highlighting all of the standards for the applicant's consideration as well as the process. The chairman's already outlined the process. We're here tonight for pre-app. After tonight, the applicant will have an opportunity to, to present the rest of the required information with the submittal, some of which they've already started to provide. We will then take all that in. We'll do a more thorough and formal review that we'll present to you at a later date, whether that would be a meeting next month or a meeting later this summer is to be determined. But that'll be the next step. I did put forth for the applicant's consideration, I just put a reference in to 1921B, which is the, all of the, list, all of the required information to be included, just to make sure that they cover and address everything that needs to be provided with the submittal. We've already discussed, the proposal currently is comprised of three parcels. The proposal results in three parcels, just of different orientation. We've, I've already talked about that, and I've already talked about the easement. So I think we're in good shape, Mr. Chair. So happy to take any, any questions you may have, or let you know the petitioners are here as well tonight.
Any planning commission questions for Brian about this? Preliminary review. Okay, then let's, thank you, Brian. Let's hear from the applicants, Randy and Marie Conflitti. Welcome to the planning commission. Would you care to offer any comments regarding your application that haven't already been discussed?
Well, I think Brian did a great job explaining it, because when we came in to explain to him, and we know the property, it was rather difficult. But I, what he's set forth before you is what we're trying to do with the property to make the lots conform. And give my mother a shed behind her home, because she has the small house behind us.
Oh, she has the small house?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Well, let's see then. At this point, I'll bring it back to the table and ask, does anybody have any questions for the applicant right now? If not, we'll run around the table and see. Eric, let's start with you.
Yeah, no, no questions. I mean, to me, it's pretty straightforward, right? We're getting rid of, so a lot of non-conformities in this situation. As long as easements are properly noted and deeded with Wayne County, then I'm, I'm fine with it.
Davis?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Jay?
Yeah, nothing other, it is, once, once it's understood, it's a very straightforward sort of thing. It's just a little difficult to understand, so I appreciate your patience with us and, and Brian.
Dan?
I don't have any comments.
Jim? Oh, I've already been down there. Sorry about that. How about it?
I'm good. I agree with my fellow commissioners, pretty straightforward.
Okay. Uta?
No extra comments.
Okay. No comments either. I think it's always a good thing if you can clear up zoning non-conformities, makes it a lot easier, you know, to make changes or sell or do whatever you want to do.
Exactly.
Okay, so on that note, if you, if you have no further questions for us, I think if you've got clear direction for Brian as to what you need to do to come back, to provide the specific information, you should be good to go from us.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Election of officers. The election of officers is, comprises the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. And the terms of office are regulated by the zoning ordinances and the planning commission bylaws. It's all spelled out that basically, once a year, we, we go through the process of identifying those people and, and having election. What I will do is I'm going to start with the chair, then the vice chair, then the secretary. We'll take one at a time. I'll describe the duties, and then we'll proceed to vote, and we'll take it from there. Anybody have any questions on the process? What does a chair do? Well, the chair facilitates meetings. Also, I set the agenda. I work with, with Brian and with staff to help provide procedural guidance to applicants when it's, when it's necessary in conceptual review meetings. And kind of help to move things along in a straightforward manner for this commission so you get the right information that you need in order to make the decisions that need to be made. So that's what, that's what the chair does. Are there any nominations for, for a chair?
I'd nominate John Schweigert, continue on as chairman.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your confidence, I appreciate it. In absentia, our vice chair, Steve Lemoine, should I be absent or unavailable, fills in for me to do those duties. I would nominate Steve to continue as vice chair. Oh, wait a minute, that's you. Hang on, I'm confused. I'm looking over here, it's you. Let's try Jay.
I was wondering what was happening.
You may have to reconsider the chair motion.
I may have a whole new, whole new perspective on this now.
I wasn't going to argue with you, but.
All right, Jay. I nominate Jay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, secretary. The secretary is Steve. I'll get it right this time. It's my last choice, I got to get it right. Steve validates the minutes that staff prepares and provides the legal signature for our Nominations, I nominate Steve to continue as secretary.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, folks. I'm sure Steve appreciates it, too.
Well, he, he who is absent shall be voluntold.
That's right. We take no prisoners. Okay, moving on. The chair's report. Asked Angela Sakakis to come and speak to us tonight. Angela is the DDA director, okay? And about, what was it, two weeks ago now, Brian and Angela and I had a, a meeting regarding the, the ice cream shop application, as well as just in general, talking about DDA and discussing ways in which the planning commission and DDA could, could kind of communicate better and coordinate, you know, so that we, we help collectively to meet each other's goals. And Angela volunteered to come and introduce herself to us tonight and speak a little bit to that topic, and let us know what's going on in the wonderful world of DDA.
Good evening, thank you. I appreciate the invitation to come here this evening. I just wanted to take a few minutes to introduce myself. I feel like I've interacted with many of you up to this date, but just talk a little bit about the DDA mission and kind of some of the things that we've tried to do and what we have plans to do in the future. You know, one example was just with the Tasty Freeze and introduction. I think that's a great example of the kinds of businesses that we would love to have on Macomb Street. I think everyone's in agreement. You know, a great family environment, great place for the kids to go. And it brings and builds community, that community feel when people are walking, riding their bikes, parking, sitting, hanging out, gathering for some amount of time, just creating that destination feel. The DDA mission, we took some time about a year ago and said, okay, we, you know, we know what we were based on, but let's set a mission for, you know, what makes sense right now. So the DDA mission is to grow, strengthen, and promote the economic health and vitality of our downtown business district on Macomb Street while generating a greater connection with our residents and island guests. We thought it important to include residents and island guests because we want it, we want that welcoming feel on Macomb Street. That's important to our business owners as well. The background, first board was appointed in 1992. The purpose was to attract people to Macomb Street. It was pretty simple, just attract some people to Macomb Street. They were responsible for the streetscape project in the Macomb Commons Park. And I'm happy to say that we paid the bond and we are now free and clear, and we have a nice budget to work with continuing and going forward. So we're So we're looking at some projects that consist of improving Lyons Park or doing something down at that Lyons Park property. The board consists of nine members and we are currently full. We just added our last board member two months ago. We need a minimum of five that have direct interest in Macomb Street and we have that achieved. And then we were able to gather some other folks who have really positive energy and some great ideas. And our meetings are the fourth Thursday of the month at 6:30. Our 2018 goals are kind of in four chunks. We are looking at really advocating for the businesses that we have and the businesses that we don't have. So we're trying to increase interest and investment in Grozeal in general, but especially on Macomb Street, obviously, and encourage residents and island guests to visit the business district so that those new businesses coming in, they have a desire to come and stay for a long period of time. Second, our events. A lot of people think that I'm an event planner. That's just a very small part. That was something that we really tried to kick off and gain some positive traction and some good energy. And what better way to do that than have a ladies' night out on Macomb Street and some other events like Paint the Town Red. So we want to continue the established events that we have and then expand where possible, where it makes sense, where we have resources. Part three is communication. A lot of people don't understand what the DDA is or what it stands for, what it means. A lot of people don't even realize we have 70 businesses on Macomb Street registered, 70, right? That just, that blew my mind coming in. And so the first thing was to take an inventory and say, who do we have? What, you know, what kind of businesses do we have? What works? What businesses have been there for long periods of time? So just really trying to improve overall communications with the businesses and the property owners and then also the residents and the island guests, just getting the word out there and trying to figure out, we throw a lot out there, see what sticks, and then try some other things in the meantime. And then fourth is the appearance, maintaining, enhancing the township-owned properties. I mentioned Lyons Park and really taking care of Macomb Commons, doing, you know, small things like power washing and making sure that, you know, all the electricals, working at Macomb Commons Lighting and the business district sign and repainting. We're looking right now at repainting all of the lamp posts because over time, you know, that wears. And then working with current and potential business owners to do the same. So we started a DDA grant for new and existing businesses to improve facades, exterior appearances. I'm happy to say the, we've now awarded, we've awarded four, I'm sorry, we've awarded three, one of which is Tasty Freeze. We are combining efforts and partnering with them and paying for a portion of the patio out front because we felt that that met DDA standards in our mission. This morning, we had cement, new cement cut and poured in combination and tandem with the Grozeal Pet and Garden Center. And then we've also agreed and awarded a grant to Grozeal Hardware. They're getting ready to do some great things to their parking lot. They've, Grozeal Hardware's done a ton. If you haven't been in there lately, you should go check it out. So I think that that's really kind of creating some excitement and I would encourage any current business owners to check out the grant, the standards of the grant, and take a look and see if it applies to them. Lastly, this is kind of the, you know, image that we're trying to create by recruiting island guests as well as residents. It's a great place to shop, dine, work, play, and live, you know, stay at home on Macomb. I wasn't the one who came up with that. That's been around for a long time. I just kind of revisited it. So I would just like to leave you with that. If there are any questions about the DDA or any of the things that we've been doing, please feel free to ask.
Okay, questions? Questions for Angela? Anybody have any questions?
Another board for the Macomb Street District, is that right? How does it all, this Macomb Street District, too, is that another board?
This is, this is just for the Macomb Street District, yeah. There was a business association at one time that was combined efforts from business owners and that, I'm not even sure the year, but that kind of went away.
Got it.
The DDA has been around since 1992, but I'm the first DDA Director. It was largely just the board and some efforts from the administrative assistant here in the office.
Now, is your district, is your district all of the Macomb Street zoning district?
Yes.
It is. So you're all the way over on Gray's Drive?
Yes.
All the way down?
And we go from Meridian down to East River, the full gamut.
Does the DDA do anything actively to promote new businesses coming to Macomb Street?
That is something that we're putting more and more effort into. I do feel like there is a general feel of the Macomb Street business owners are folks who live on Grozeal or who have lived on Grozeal or who want to live on Grozeal. And so we really want to try to expand that effort to bring in business owners, you know, from all over. It's, you know, it's a great place to invest. You know, a lot of people, they want to make statements and claims that, you know, it's just not a great place to invest. It's not easy to do business here. There's not, you know, with two bridges and one of which might be shut down, you know, from time to time. So it's important to encourage our own residents to come and use our businesses. But I equate it to, you know, like a Chelsea or, Chelsea wasn't even on the map. It's in the middle of, you know, the West Side and, you know, that really was put on the map when the, there's, you know, a restaurant and Purple Rose Theater and that's about it. But people go and visit it all the time. They go stay at a nice bed and breakfast, like somebody might choose to do with Bishop's Cottage. You know, we have a lot of the same offerings. You know, I have a lot of experience over the last 20 years. I traveled a lot all over the Southeast and I had a lot of windshield time, a lot of very small towns in the Southeast. And the majority of those towns were based around a little bit of arts and culture. One really good restaurant, they had people come and go and, you know, come up and down I-75. But there's lots of little, Tybee Island, I mean, I know it's, the climate is better there, but, you know, Tybee Island isn't easy to get to, yet people put it on the map and say, I'm going to go visit there. I'm going to stay there. There's a lot of great aspects to living in Grozeal and a lot of great aspects to come and spend the day in Grozeal as well. And someone could bring their kayak, bring their bicycles, go stop at Lloyd's, pop in at Ohana, and, you know, we have a lot of great things to offer, so we need to remind people of that.
And a lot of times, as you know from some of the Township Board meetings you've attended, some people don't quite understand how the DDA is funded and maybe you want to address that real quick.
Sure, sure. It's tax increment financing based, so it's a small percentage of the difference in the taxes that are collected from what the businesses pay. So it's not, we don't, none of the money comes out of general fund. It's basically the businesses within the district are reinvesting. I mean, in very simple terms, it's the businesses are reinvesting in themselves, right? I think that's probably the best way to put it.
What kind of budget does that translate into?
Right now, we're at about, just under $300,000.
Thousand a year?
Working budget. Mm-hmm. Right.
You have some funds to really work with.
Yeah, absolutely. And we support, you know, we try to do things cooperatively, the concerts on the Commons on Sundays. We do that in combination with the Arts Alliance and a family that supports, that has supported it for a long, long time, the Rosie Meyer family. We do things in combination with recreation because I'm part-time and I don't have any seasonal employees. We have, we have a couple of seasonal boys who do the watering, but I work with the garden club to help manage that. So I try to really combine efforts. We have a lot of great volunteer organizations and, as you know, and commissions. So that kind of expands what we can do and it's far-reaching when we have those volunteers to help do some of those projects. And the Recreation Department helps out quite a bit as well.
Does the DDA have any plans to perhaps get a little more involved again at Islandfest? You know, it used to be Islandfest was along Macomb Street and it was just a hotbed of activity. And now it's a hotbed of activity at the airport.
Right.
Is there any possibility of sharing?
We, you know what, we're trying again to combine efforts a little bit, so we're working with them cooperatively to kind of help support the parade and keep that parade on Macomb Street. And then we're encouraging our businesses to do things throughout the weekend in combination with that and to pull people down there. There's talk in the future, probably not this year, but in the future, of offering transportation back and forth so that we can, you know, bring people back and forth or, you know, people, we can also, you know, make it available to park down there, make it a little more walkable, a little more bicycle-friendly. We do have a few boutiques, we'll be offering sidewalk sales, offering deals throughout the weekend. That's kind of where we're limited right now. I do set up a vendor table at the Islandfest in the hangar also, just to kind of remind people, hey, we're not that far away, right down at Macomb Street and what we have available. So that's really our plan right now. We do work in conjunction a little bit and we're constantly trying to think of new ways. It's very actually busy on Macomb Street in May and June. We have a lot of spring seasonal business, so they get quite a lot of activity, not specifically to that weekend, but in general during that time.
Additional thoughts?
Yeah, if I could, one, I just wanted to clarify one thing. You said how much we'd take in from the tax increment financing. You also mentioned earlier that the bond was just retired. Yeah, that was eating up a significant amount of that for years and that's just recently finished, right?
Right, yes.
So I think it's fair to say that the DDA's funds were severely limited until very recently and only now is there, you know, a relatively free flow of funds there. So we should be looking to see some exciting things coming out of the DDA. One thing that, in disclosure, I was previously on the DDA and one of the things that I was always concerned about being on the DDA and the Planning Commission was there are certain, now I'm getting into the nuts and bolts, there are certain differences in, you know, say, for example, we have a master plan that includes a Macomb Street District plan that at times appeared to be running counter to some of the goals of the DDA. And I think a lot of it is just difference of opinion about the right way to promote activity on Macomb Street. I guess I would encourage, you know, one of the issues we had in the past was without staff, it was hard to, you know, kind of reconcile those things. But I would encourage you to take a look at our Macomb Street District master plan and some of the zoning and things like that and then, you know, maybe turn that into a discussion down the road, either, you know, directly with Brian and, you know, kind of staff to staff or potentially bring it, you know, to us if there are things that are, you know, that we have done, you know, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, or earlier that you think is not helping what you're trying to accomplish. You know, we'd be happy to, not speak for the whole board, but, you know, it's something that we would entertain certainly to hear what those things are that we can do to help. Or if there are things that are, you know, contained within ours that you think, you know, maybe would inform maybe what the DDA is thinking, you know. I just think, there were times when I saw, you know, the easiest example that I always had in my mind was the, you know, street-side parking versus back-of-the-building parking. And I think when the master plan was written, it was a heavy emphasis on back-of-the-building parking. And I think what I heard a lot from the DDA was, well, we need street-front parking. And, you know, it was obvious that they were, you know, not on the same page.
Right.
You know, to the extent we can get on the same page. I don't know which is the right one and maybe it's different in each situation, but those are the sorts of things that I think it would be helpful if we're pulling in the same direction on any of those things so that as changes are made, we're thinking of the same things.
I think that sounds great.
Jay's point is a perfect one. As we discussed, you know, we're interested in input. We're interested in discussion, you know, things that will help the community, you know, that's where working together can do that, so.
Absolutely. No, I'm happy to hear that.
The right way.
I think that's great.
Other thoughts? Dan, any thoughts?
I don't have any comments.
Brian?
Just some thoughts and, you know, just I'm excited that you're here, that you're, you know, working and being a champion for the DDA because, as you mentioned, you know, some people might think that it's not the right climate for, you know, businesses along Macomb Street, but it's like utterly important as far as our economic development and retaining home values here on the island. As you mentioned, you know, anywhere you go, it's like people are looking for those destinations. So you mentioned Chelsea and, you know, people coming there and frequent. There needs to be some, you know, rallying point to get people together and, you know, to coalesce around a center of place. And like any city or village that is actually growing, they're building downtowns and so it's ultimately, you know, it's going, in my opinion, going to make or break whether or not Grozeal is successful in the future. Oftentimes, when I'm introducing people to Grozeal, one of the first things they ask, well, where do you do your shopping? Where do you go for restaurants? There's nothing on Grozeal, is there? So actually building up the buzz about the existing businesses that are out there and recruiting new ones and creating events to get more people to come out here, that's exactly what we need. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Huta?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I'm glad Jay brought up the bond issue because it was that, it was, it did shackle the DDA in terms of what it could do, but it also created the environment of Macomb Street that we know now. Before, Macomb Street had a sidewalk on only one side of the street. I don't know if you remember the arguments that we had here at the board, should we have a sidewalk on the north side? I think there was, Jay brought up the discussion of street-side parking and backlot parking. And obviously, we see how it was resolved and whether or not it worked. Now we have the data, so to speak. But it was that infusion of investment that created the district that now I think the DDA has something to work with. You know, there are parks, there are sidewalks, there are green spaces, there's streetscape, the whole project to put the lamp posts down the street. It's been like a 20-plus-year placemaking project and now we actually have the investment in a director to kind of push toward the next phase. So I think it's just a very exciting thing to see what used to be a very sleepy little street, really turning into the heart of our community where the kids and the grandparents and the parents all look forward. And it doesn't have to be Islandfest anymore. It can be Halloween Parade. It can be, like you said, ladies' night out or, you know, homecoming. The efforts last year, I hope they grow because people weren't even aware yet that we could have the whole town out there for homecoming, not just the, you know, everyone's at the football game, but what do you do after the football game while they're, you know, you gave us something to do? So I think it takes everything. It takes investment of valuable resources of people and money to generate the energy that you were talking about. So, and then you include a talented group like this Planning Commission, people who have a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge about what works and doesn't work in placemaking. And I've got to throw Brian in there, too. You know, he's been a very valuable resource in planning some of these and your company in planning the way some of these things were laid out. So it takes a team.
Thank you, Huta. Eric, any thoughts, comments?
Yeah, no, I think Brian said it right. I mean, the businesses on the Combs Street are vitally important to the, you know, the long-term success and enchantment, if you will, of the island. So you've got a very, a very big job and glad you're filling the shoes and taking advantage of the investments that have already been made on that, on the street and furthering them so we can continue to have a viable business district. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Jim?
I'm all set. Thank you for presenting. Huta stole my speech, so.
Yeah, I'd just say, you know, Macomb Street, the shop, dine, work, play, it's a series, it's small things. Small things make a difference, like going past the Commons and seeing all those flags. I think that's wonderful.
Good.
I mean, that's, it's a small thing, but it's an important thing. And, you know, these little small things add up and make it really very nice. So, you know, I applaud your efforts.
We're working at it, so.
And thank you for coming by and talking with us and you're welcome anytime.
Good, thank you.
So, you know, if you, as Jay said, if you have issues or things that, you know, think we can help with, we're open. We're open for business, just like on Macomb Street. So thank you, Angela.
Good, thank you. Thank you for having me. Have a good night.
You, too. Okay. Next item under Chair's report is the discussion service animals. Huta raised this issue in an email to several people, including me, and I thought it was somewhat interesting. It's very preliminary right now, but Huta, just in general, would you summarize what the issue is? And then Brian, tell us how we as a Planning Commission will think about this.
So basically, what happened at last week's Township Board meeting is we had a resident come up during public comment with, one, an issue she was having, and, two, a suggestion that some changes be made to an ordinance. And obviously, since it was brought up during public comment, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of preliminary information available and we certainly, as a board, weren't briefed on what the issues at hand were. But one thing that the board did agree on is that when a resident does come to a Township Board meeting and make a suggestion that maybe something be changed, that we at least entertain that suggestion and look into it and see if, you know, where it should go. And so I, as liaison to this body, I felt like it was important, I at least bring it up to. up to the chair, and I brought it to Brian and to Lori and Lorinda. On a preliminary level, the resident sent some very basic, a very basic article to the clerk's office, which then Brian Freel shared with the board. But what that boiled down to was a bit different than what we were, what we were talking about with the resident at the meeting. For instance, the material really addressed the need for a, say, a business owner to have a provision for a client or a customer coming in with a service animal. It did not address things like our ordinance, how do you house, the more exotic of the service animals. I don't think anybody has an issue with where and how you keep your service dog or your emotional support guinea pig. But this particular resident had a mini horse and felt constrained by our ordinance about how and where she could keep her mini horse. So over time, getting more information, I think we discovered there was a lot more to this situation than was represented during public comment. But the part that I think is valuable for us to continue discussing is, again, we have an ordinance that discusses, you know, residential keeping of animals, pets and large animals like horses. And is it time, is it time for us to readdress that based on public changes to perceptions, you know, of what constitutes a service animal? And so I just thought, whether or not we go forward, I did believe it was important for everyone to know about it and to get then the educated input of our consultant and our chair and the rest of the, and the rest of the commission. So the Township Board was unanimous in its consensus that we do that investigation, not on any particular action or resolution, but simply, yes, it's, we think it's valuable that we at least investigate, is this something we should or should not go forward with.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention, Huta. You know, Brian, you've had some early thoughts on this as to how we ought, how we ought to be thinking about this, as to how to proceed or what we could consider.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I think it would be premature for me to try to sit here and explain to you, you know, what ordinances I think need to be changed and/or how. I think what we really need to do is some more research to figure out exactly what the implications are to your existing ordinances. Once we do that, then I think we can start to pinpoint things that we might want to tackle, whether it's individual ordinances, because right now, your keeping of animals is in the zoning ordinance. How, where, when you can keep horses is a separate ordinance. It's in the municipal code outside of zoning. So we have some different elements that we really have to look at. And then I think we need to really understand the law, if you will, in terms of whether there's something that exempts somebody from local zoning, for instance, if they have an emotional service pet of some sort. There's a lot that goes into it. I think that's really, we need to do the base research upfront, see what the implications are based on current zoning, and then come back to you and let you know if we think changes are warranted, and if so, how we plan to address them, and again, to what particular sections of the ordinance that we, you know, we need to make some changes, if we need to make changes.
I assume, Huta, since you raised this issue, you were, your board preferences for the Planning Commission and Brian to?
Absolutely.
Done this?
To take the lead, to look into it. If it boils down to the fact that no changes are necessary, that, you know, then no changes are necessary. But we, the board itself doesn't feel that it can make this kind of determination. And if anyone is going to investigate the ordinances and the implications, this is really the body to do so. And so what they're looking for is, I think, exactly what Brian just recommended, is that we, you know, lean on our consultant to lay out the groundwork for us, and then we, give us something to understand and to work with.
Well, we will, we will take up the challenge. Any questions for Brian on the issue at this point? Some more information or anything else? Okay. Next meeting date. Brian, I know we've got, you know, obviously, this lot reconfiguration. We also have another lot split that's out there floating around. Any thoughts on timing? And also, we want to, at the next meeting, address Bayview.
Yep. I think, yeah, I would, at this point, for certain, next meeting would be Bayview, an update on the research for service animals, and potentially the 8319 Macomb Lot Reconfiguration. So that will in large part depend upon the applicant, making sure that we have all of the materials we need, and then we'll, you know, we'll process that accordingly. The other one that you alluded to, I don't foresee that being ready for Planning Commission at whatever your next meeting's going to be, whether it be May, whether it be June. I don't foresee that one being ready quite yet. We're still kind of having some administrative-type meetings in terms of getting all of the parties together. It's a pretty complex project. I won't get into the details now, but it basically involves our office, engineering, police, fire, DPS for utilities, Wayne County for roads. Ultimately, it'll come to Planning Commission for a couple of different reviews, if in fact it's pursued. So that one, I don't believe is forthcoming. But I do believe those other items should be ready for, you know, potentially be it a May meeting, or maybe it's an early June meeting. Trying to look.
Well, if we schedule the next meeting around, first of all, the applicant for the lot split we heard tonight, or lot reconfiguration we heard tonight, and being able to address Brian and I, by the way, for Bayview, we had a discussion about this. And essentially, rather than having, attempting to have separate meetings, you know, on different days or whatever, residents of Bayview, we decided that we should use the ordinance the way it's written. We will hold, you know, we'll schedule a public hearing, you know, on the ordinance change, just as we discussed, with all the mailing and all the information. Brian will be available in private, you know, for, on office, in his office hours, to talk. The Planning Commission, if we hear things that require further investigation, or in fact even a second or a third public hearing, we have the option of doing that. If, on the other hand, we get into it and we find out that, you know, what we've proposed, you know, makes sense to people, and we can move forward to make a recommendation to Township Board, we're free to do so. So keep it within the framework of the way the ordinance is written, use the process, and it's the best way to go. So at the next meeting, what I'm asking of Brian is to schedule this in such a fashion that we hold a formal public hearing.
We'll be ready, Mr. Try. I'm just looking at the timing. I think that because we want to incorporate that project with a formal public hearing, I think we'd probably get pushed into June, just because, for the notification timing.
Sure. Little of June, maybe?
Third Monday in May creates problems for the timing of that. So first or third Monday in June, we are on first and third Mondays, right? I know I made you guys, I know you guys, I made you guys meet on the fifth Monday because that was my only Monday I had open, but, yeah, I would say if we focused on June, that gives us sufficient time to get those items prepared.
Why don't we target tentatively for the third Monday, whatever that is?
It would be the 18th.
18th? How does that look on people's schedules?
I will not be in town, but I am just one and just the liaison.
Hey, how about everybody else? How about June the first, the first Monday?
Fourth.
The fourth. Huta?
I'm here for that.
Other guys? You all right?
Either is fine with me.
Other is fine with me also.
Fourth is better.
Fourth is better?
Yeah.
Farther away from the July 4th holiday. Okay, how about, Brian? Let's try, let's try, can you, can you be ready to go on the first Monday in June?
That will be our plan of attack.
Okay.
If, if for some reason we are unable to achieve that, I will let everyone know as soon as possible. I'm just, I'm just looking at the timing. If we're on June 4, that puts that there, that should be okay. That means notices wouldn't have to go out until next week or even the week after. My concern was that if we tried to bump it into May, we're looking at having to do notices like tomorrow. So that was just, that would be too rushed.
No.
But it gives us an extra week or two.
Yeah. We're fine. We're fine in June. That also gives the lot configuration.
Yep.
Time to address.
Yep.
Their concerns or their issues. Okay, tentatively, June 4, folks. Okay, is there anything else anybody would like to discuss at this point? Everybody okay? Nervous intentions adjourned? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, folks.